Alrighty, we'll call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, surplus property, CTE classroom equipment, first read.
In board members in your packet, you will find a list of CTE classroom equipment that has been deemed not usable anymore. And as per TCA code, you will see the descriptions along with any information about that that is being asked to move to be able to sell through, through gov deals.
Okay, any comments, questions? Okay, item number two, resolution teacher bonuses, first read.
Board members, the Tennessee General Assembly passed the Education Freedom Act of 2025 during a special session this year. Section four of this law allows for a one-time bonus of no less than $2,000 for each teacher in K-12 from the Department of Education. In order for teachers in the school system to be awarded this bonus, the local Board of Education for the LEA must first adopt a resolution affirming participation. In your board packet, you will find a copy of the proposed resolution that if passed would be signed and uploaded for submission prior to the June 1st deadline to the Tennessee Department of Education, allowing that $2,000 bonus to be awarded to teachers sometime late summer, early fall.
Any questions, comments? Okay, item three, resolution 2020, 2425 budget amendments, extended school funds, federal budget amendments, first read.
And I will ask Jeff Taylor, Chief Financial Officer, to come up and present the budget amendments.
Good evening to all of y'all. How are y'all doing this evening? If you look at these amendments, the first part is for the extended school program. Of course, all these revenues that we use for that are come from the state or federal revenues. As you can see, we'll have 4.6 million, 4,532,000, excuse me, in other state education funds, as well as additional other federal funds of 611,658 dollars for a total of 5.14 million dollars. That gives us that amount of an available funds. On the expenditure side, these are just the numbers that will be appropriated to reflect the revenues that were projected to receive for salaries and in benefits and supplies and materials. Same thing on this page, total expenditures equal the revenues of 5,144,000 dollars. Moving on to the federal amendments, the first five on there, consolidated admin through Title III. These are just additional revenues, or in the case of Title II and Title III, reducing additional revenues on those as well. I think it's a typo without the parentheses, but additional revenues and expenditures on those. It's consolidated admin and Title I, we're reducing those revenues and expenditures. On Title IV and ARPA homeless and the CTE Perkins, it's just reallocation of existing funds. And then on IDEA Part B and the pre-K, these are just additional revenues and expenditures that we are appropriating. Any questions? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, item four, 2526, proposed consolidated budget, first read.
And again, Jeff Taylor.
I was talking to someone earlier today. They said it used to take three hours to go through this. I don't plan on it taking three hours tonight, just so you know. Just to give an overview on the first page of all the funds, not just general purpose. This budget we went through there, we looked at doing a two and a half percent COLA for this year, but we've reduced it down to 2%. That's a cost of about 7.2 million dollars. With this though, we did increase the starting teacher pay to 50,000 a year in order to meet the state requirements for 2026 and to compete with other school districts locally. The two, this also does include the 2% COLA and stipend increase, on stipend increases for the extracurricular activities. We did a COLA on that as well. And employee eligible, employees eligible for the annual steps, that cost is at about 5.56 million. One that kind of hurt us this year was the 8% increase we had to have on medical premiums. The cost just continued to rise on that. So we had to increase that for a total cost of 3.3 million. With our new positions and changes in existing positions, that cost was an additional 1.5 million. Our scheduled, excuse me, our scheduled market analysis, that resulted in a cost adjustment of 385,000. Paving costs, of course, we're having the highway department work with us on that, but that still, we appropriated a million dollars for that. School buses, normal cost, that is increased by half a million dollars. Actual amount, I think, is 2,751,000, but that's for 16 buses, just to keep in the normal line of replacement. Insurance premium, estimated increases for property and liability, that's 762,000. And then there was additional funds needed for the special education extended school year due to the loss of the ESER funds. That was an addition of 303,000 for the stipend and benefit costs. And then lastly, just increases in software and technology of 410,000. Moving on to the general purpose fund. Right now, we're looking at expenditures of 456,580,000 dollars. We have 428,530,000 in revenues, as well as available fund balance of 27.5 million to cover those expenditures. Under the revenues, this just gives you the breakout. 281,578,000 comes from state revenues, of course, most of that TISA funding. 138.7 million in local revenues, property taxes, sales tax dollars, and then $2 million in federal revenues, as well as 6.2 million in non-revenue sources. Just a comparison from last year's budget, under state revenues, we're seeing an increase of almost 8,500,000 dollars. Under local revenues, an estimated 3.5 million. And under the non-revenue sources, 4.8 million, and then of course, a drop of 726,000 for the federal revenues for this year. And of course, that a lot of that's got to do with the ESER funding. Moving on to the revenues for the general purpose fund, the notable increases of the three and a half million was 517,000 in property taxes, 2.36 million in sales tax, 575,000 in business tax, as well as 310,000 in the mixed drink tax. The one decrease we did see was just under 300,000 in the E-rate funding. And that was all the local revenues as well. Moving on to the state revenues, we saw a 12.2 million dollar increase in the TISA funding. As much as I hate to say this number, 666,000 decrease in early child, could head, childhood education for pre-K entitlement grant. A 1.4 million dollar decrease in other state education funds for public school security grant. A $2 million decrease in other vocational revenues for the innovative school model grant. And a $5 million increase in operating transfers. And that is mostly coming from the federal fund. We kept an additional funds though, in that fund for the past few years, just with the ESER funds flowing through there, just to make sure we had enough cash flow to cover any expenses as we were receiving the revenues. Now that ESER is gone, those funds are not necessary and we're moving those back into GP. Yes, sir.
The 666 million decrease in early childhood education. Dr. Lynn, how would that affect our ability to be able to offer pre-K to the community?
We are still committed to keeping pre-K, and so we still have the pre-K system. It's just part of the grant dollars that have gone away. We are working to, to look at other grant opportunities in the future, and there's potential for that coming from the state. But this particular grant has expired with the ESER funding.
Moving on to the federal revenues, that's equal to, we had over a $700,000 decrease in those federal revenues for this year, showing an amount of 2,654, 2,654 dollars. And then, of course, as I mentioned earlier, the non-revenue sources, an increase of 5 million from the operating transfers. Funds moving back from the federal fund. So total revenues, we have 428,530,692 dollars, giving, and then with our beginning fund balance of 76,148,000, as well as our reserves of 7,280,000, that gives us total reserves and fund balance of 83.4 and total available funds of 511, just under 512 million. Moving on to the expenditures, we show about 456,580,000 dollars in expenses. Of course, as you all well know, 84, 84% of that is in relation to salary and benefits for the staff for the school system. They're always the top priority as far as helping educate our children. As far as the other expenditures, the next highest amount would be the 31.1 million for supplies and materials. And then 16.9 million for contracted services. Moving into the functions and the departments, under regular instruction, I'll just kind of go through the ones where we saw the most significant increases. Under regular instruction, contracted services, that increase is basically based on increased service rates and cost for a lot of the services that are provided to our students and to the schools. Under vocational education, the increase there is under contracted services as well and equipment. That increase was just based on the adjustments to the innovative school models grant. If you recall, the last amendment that we did, we moved a lot of those funds into those two lines through that amendment. Moving on to the next page, under student services. This one was kind of misleading. Under staff development, that line shows a 95% increase, but this was another one where there was an amendment done to move those funds out to do renovations over at the Greenwood complex. This is just restoring that back to the original budgeted amount. Under health services, the 19.11% increase. That was for cost and equipment, a piece of equipment they use in there that they have to have calibrated every year, just the cost is increased for that. Under other student support, the biggest increase, of course, was staff development. And once again, that was where money was moved based on the innovative school models grant. Under regular instructional support, this one was one of the lines where we had moved money out of it to help pay for the strategic system that we were implementing into the schools. This is just putting that budget back to where it originally was, less $5,000. The original amount was 400,960 dollars, and we're just putting it back to where it was originally at. Under special education support, this one, we just moved a lot of these funds from the school ISA accounts. They're wanting to combine it into one account where all purchases using these funds can be made from one area. So it's not really a huge increase, it's just moving from one area to another. Under vocational education support, the decreases on this line, they were due to the reduction of the innovative school models grant, as I mentioned last year. This is the last year of the funding. Moving on to the next page, technology classroom instruction. There's a 410,000 dollar increase in this line, and it's, as it mentioned in the overview, this was due just strictly to the increased cost in software for fiscal year 26. Moving on to the next page, under printing and communications. Most of this is just relates, in relation to the volume of copies that are made and the increased cost of paper for both supplies and materials and contracted services. Under office of the principal, increase under contracted services, that's for software costs that are used in school bookkeeping. It's a new software we're going forward with this coming year, that'll make things a lot simpler for them to use and make it a lot more efficient. Under human resources, under contracted services, once again, this is just an increase for personnel services and for increases in travel. Those travel, the travel form we've used, I'm sure some of you have done travel recently. As of April 1st, that has changed where we've updated that, making the per diem rates closer to what they have been for, under GSA.gov and the IRS mileage reimbursement rate of 70 cents a mile. Think a lot of those lines in preview, the previous year had been increased. So some of those line items didn't have to be as significantly increased for this fiscal year. Under operation of plant, insurance premiums. This is something that's been a trend the past several years. When we've looked at budgets, they just continue to increase. And once again, we had to increase that by 30%. Under maintenance of plant, under supplies, contracted services, we just had increase for paving services. Of course, the highway department is gracious enough to do a lot of that for us right now. So that's a cost savings. Under equipment, 424,000, that's just to use as a replacement of aging vehicles and equipment within that department. And then under staff development, one of the proposed positions, a boiler-chiller tech, this is just to provide staff development for that position. Under early childhood education, we moved funds from equipment to supplies and materials, just to put it in the right category, which increased that line. And then under contracted services, just an increase to travel and reimbursement rates. And then lastly, under debt service, we have 1.1 million. This is the last year of our last computer lease. So this is year four of that. And once we're done with that, there will be no more debt service payments unless we choose to lease in the future. All that being said, our final expenditures for the GP fund are 456 million, ending reserves at 7,280,000, and then giving us a total reserve and fund balance of 55.9 million. And total expenditures, reserves and fund balance at just under 512 million. Do you have any questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you for that presentation, and thank you for all the information you've provided. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Have, has your office started forecasting for the next year in the event that prices unforeseen go up, like fuel prices may be going up? And some of the cost of the goods that we normally purchase have that potential of going up?
These numbers come from those departments, and for some of this stuff, to be honest with you, it's something we're just gonna, we may have to make adjustments as the year progresses. I know some of the areas we have increased, but I know there's other areas that we'll probably have to keep an eye out. And there's very, it's realistically possible that we will have to adjust those numbers.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Alright, moving on to federal projects. Of course, most of these lines, with ESER funding going away and some of these other federal grants going away this year, almost all of these lines are a significant decrease from the previous year. Mean total revenues have gone from 35.4 million down to 23.4 for this year. Have a beginning fund balance of 8 million dollars. Moving on to the expenditures, as you can see, we have a 26.6% decrease in regular instruction, 15.4 under special education, 4.18% decrease in vocational ed, and 100% decrease in health services. Moving on to the other, next page, all these are decreases as well, except for the last one, vocational education support. And it's just a small, minuscule amount, 33,701 dollars for salaries and 1,863 dollars for benefits. As you can see, these lines are all down to zero. Then transportation, of course, 931,982 dollars, which is about a 36% decrease from last year. And then, of course, the inter-fund transfers, I mentioned earlier, where 5 million dollars of those funds will be going back to the general purpose fund. Gives us an ending fund balance projected of 3 million dollars and total expenditures and fund balance of 31.4. Moving on to child nutrition. One of the positives last year with the, with the trustees office, my predecessor did a good job of communicating with the trustees office in the county about looking at the interest breakout. Resolution was done by the county commission and approved, so that allowed for the nutrition fund to receive additional interest income from trustees offices. You can see, that is, that budget for this year is 5,000. We've changed that to 700,000 for the next fiscal year. So that's a significant increase for sure, right there. Everything else is pretty standard, as far as the revenues go, gives us a beginning fund, revenues of 24.3 million and fund balance of just under 13.6. Expenses, really the only ones that were significant increases, retirement stabilization rate of 17.15%. A lot of that had to do with the adjustment that TCRS made, and that, that fluctuates from year to year. I think it went from 1.18 to 1.26 this year, so that increased. And of course, with newer employees, as, as we have turnover and some of the older employees get off the legacy, more go into this, and that increases the amount we have to budget as well. Under dues and memberships, I know this is something that they talked about wanting to give additional training to their employees, so that's increased to 1,000 dollars. That, of course, in turn causes the travel to increase. And then lastly, under uniforms, that increased from 10 to 45,000. As y'all may recall, one of my first budget amendments, we were moving funds around because we were going from renting uniforms to purchasing them. This is for that purpose, so that they can purchase uniforms for their employees. An increase from 10,000 to 45. And then, lastly, vehicle parts. Once again, it's a situation where costs have increased and they continue to need to increase their budget as well, so that's gone from 7 to 10,000 dollars. So total expenditures of 28.6 million, leaving us with an estimated fund balance of 9,364,000, and then total expenditures and fund balance of just under 38 million. Any questions?
I just wanted to, Norm, do you think that that 10,000 dollars is going to be enough with what we're going through today for the parts increase, proposed parts increase?
Vehicle parts.
I know we're doing day-to-day, but the bottom line is, we got to keep the buses running.
This is under nutrition. This is not under the buses.
Oh, oh, that's, that's, that's not our vehicle.
Well, it's under child nutrition. It's not under transportation. That's next.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought it was for us. I said, that's kind of low.
We're good? Okay. Next, transportation. We have a 200, just under a 270,000 dollar increase in the current property tax projections for this fiscal year and an increase in TISA funding of half a million dollars. So that gives our local revenues 3,600,000 and the state revenues of 19.9. And then, under 4713, federal revenues, we have just under 1.3 million dollars, which is a decrease from last year, but still we end up with total revenues of just under 24.2 million and a beginning fund balance of about 7,500,000. Total funds available, 31.2 million. Same thing here, not a lot of huge changes. Laundry service, that was an increase, but it's only 5,200, or dues and memberships, but that is for two additional positions, which is a boiler-chiller tech and a plumber. So for them to keep their certifications up, we needed to provide them with additional funding for dues and memberships as well as travel. Maintenance and repairs vehicles, this one increased by 25% from 12,000 to 15,000. Excuse me. And then on other contracted services, just, once again, additional, just increase in costs for that. Next up, the vehicle and equipment insurance, as we mentioned earlier, the premiums for property casualty and liability are going up. So of course, in turn, this goes up as well by almost 56,000 dollars. So our total expenditures are 28.6 million, and with all that, will leave us with a fund balance of just under 2.6 million. Total expenditures and fund balance of 31.2. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to extended school, you actually won't see a budget on this one. The only thing we're adjusting is the beginning fund balance. We just, I just showed you the budget amendment a few minutes ago. That is for FY25. We will probably do an amendment later on in the fiscal year of FY26 to put in the budget for the extended school program, because it'll be through June, and then we'll update it after that. We also, I've got a note in here, we will amend next month the beginning fund balance, because we'll have to transfer, have general purpose, transfer a million dollars to cover the timing issues with the reimbursement for our, one of our grants, just a cash flow maneuver. So that money would eventually go back into GP. As you can see, there's no figures there, other than the big change in fund balance. Lastly, we have capital projects. Right now, of course, Norm's list is long, as far as what we have to do on schools. We realize the county can't pay for all these at one time. So right now, we are projecting, proposing and requesting 10,825,000 dollars from the county for our capital projects. First one is for the Woodlawn Elementary. We're wanting to replace the unit vents in the BAS system at a cost of 2.5 million. We have system-wide site group one projects around 4.8, 4,825,000. And then for Montgomery Central Middle, we have a roof restoration that'll be at a cost of 3.5 million dollars. And I added some slides that Norm had presented to me, and I'll have attached that for y'all to review. I won't read it all to you, but just kind of goes through the history of all these projects. Y'all have any questions? And also, I realize that y'all will want to talk one-on-one about this. You're more than welcome. If you don't mind, give Latonya a call, and I'll be happy to meet with each of you. Just give me a time in the next week, this week or beginning of next week, and I'll be happy to speak with each and every one of you.
Anybody else?
Alright, thank you.
Alrighty, item six, county commissioners' comments? Alrighty, item six, other business? Dr. Lynn, better? Oh, it wasn't on here. Board member comments?
Yes.
No, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. What I'd like to bring up to the board is the consideration to add a student, non-voting student member to our board. The objective of having this student on here to give us the feedback directly from the students, so we don't just sit up here and operate in the vacuum. We get some direct feedback from, from the students, what's going on in the schools. This was done in other school districts, and we used to have a student representative that used to come to our meetings. But my proposal is that we consider having a student board member join us, and he would be selected from all the school, the student body presidents, and let them select which one would be, would lead it. And I'd like to bring that up for the board and just get your feedback at what your ideas are, what you think of this idea.
I would like to say that this is something that is long needed for this district. We are a level five board, and being a level five board, we always should be in front, not coming from behind. And all the time that I've been here, we have discussed, we've discussed it, but we never acted upon it. So I agree with you, Mr. Nelson, that this is something that we need to definitely consider and consider wisely.
Mr. Griffey?
Echo Mr. Garland's comments there a little bit, but we, Mr. Nelson, I attended a workshop, and this, I believe, had a great perspective for the board to have a student's opinion on subjects and have their voice here in the boardroom. Some of the things that we heard, and like he's mentioned, was, you know, the high school levels all have class officers. Let those class officers elect a board member to sit for a year. And I, and I do think this is a great thing for the school system. It'll also be great for the schools and the students. The students will feel better about the board, because we're not just something, inability, somebody they don't know anything about. And they'll have actually someone, one of their peers, that they can talk to that has our ear and is sitting here in the boardroom with us. And I certainly commend you for bringing that up. And would love to see the director and her staff put something together that will allow the student body presidents to elect or appoint someone for that position. Thank you.
Thank you. So Casey and I attended, um, another district's board meeting, and they have two, and we thought it was pretty interesting, that was the first thing we noticed when we went in, we were like, what are they doing? And they got up to talk about what they're doing in school, and they got to, the board asked them questions, the superintendent asked questions and able to give feedback, so they had two of those, they got their items out of the way at the beginning, so we've seen it in action, of course, you know, at COSPA too, but heard about it, but we've seen it in action, we thought it was a great thing. Anybody else? Okay, moving on, other business?
Good evening, board members. First, as a quick reminder, state testing begins next week. We are excited for our students to demonstrate all the academic growth made this year. April is month of the military child, so do not forget to wear your purple on Wednesday, April sixteenth, for Purple Up for Military Kids Day. I'm proud to announce that one hundred percent of CMCSS schools will have obtained the Purple Star Award, which recognizes schools with a major commitment to serving military-connected families. We will be holding a special recognition at our formal board meeting later this month. Next, my heart is full, as I've spent today surprising our top five classified employees of the year for the school system. From electricians to bookkeepers to lead custodians to educational assistants, to our very own school board secretary, Ms. Latonya Long. As finalists in the top five classified employees who will be honored at a luncheon in May. We cannot thank you enough for all you do to serve our students and fellow employees. Finally, please remember to keep our fellow neighbors and your thoughts and prayers, as many have navigated the challenges brought on by historic weather events of the past week. Despite the difficulties, I want to recognize the collaborative spirit of this community during trying times. Thank you to all the community partners who never fail to rally for our students and families. Mr. Lanier, this concludes my report for the evening.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned.